All right. Welcome, everyone, to the Newton Planning Board Public Meeting. It is November 25th. We will start by saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got a couple things on the agenda today. So first up... No, we're not voting on anything.
Okay, so we're good?
I think we're fine.
I would just put because we need a quorum.
Yeah, you do need a quorum. And there might be some things we'll vote on later, not related to the first agenda item.
So I need to appoint Keith South.
Good. Thank you.
So Mr. Gibbons has been appointed.
Okay. First up, we have the updated or the update for the amended site plan for Nine Puzzle Lane, map 141274. Do you have an update?
Good evening, Board. Tom Leckborg from Northern, builder for 125 Development. We're here tonight because we have completed the deficiency letter that we received May 2023. And we'd worked with a town engineer, and we have completed everything. And we have a report on the backside from Mike. And everything's been done. The milars have been recorded with the current layout and all the parks that are going with it. And we're here tonight just to ask for a letter to be written to the bank saying that we are no longer at odds. And we will provide the information where for that to go. And any questions?
I don't have any questions. Do we have? Has there been any points of concern raised or any items that we need to discuss?
Really, the final as far as approvals and their notice of decision and their conditions, the last thing really was getting it recorded. If that has been satisfied, then they have met their conditions. A letter doesn't need to come from the planning board, other than the planning board could write a letter saying that this application has been approved and finalized. Since it's not the planning board that issued a deficiency letter, it's actually a code enforcement select board issue. So I'd recommend the letter actually come from them. But I do think the planning board could vote to send a letter to the select board.
I would appreciate if that could happen or the select board would write it. It would be good. I know Sammy's super busy, so I don't want to detain it too long. I know we got a holiday, so I don't expect it to be done until after, you know, next week. Something will be fine. But that would be awesome, we get that to happen. I'm just happy to put this behind us.
I will talk to Robin about getting that letter printed up. And then we can get that out to him.
Yeah, I don't think there needs to be a vote of the board. I think it should just be consensus that if all of the conditions have been satisfied, which in my opinion they have been, that the select, it's recommended to the select board.
And I'll sign it.
Okay, that'd be awesome. It looks good. I don't know if anybody's been by and looked at it, but...
I turn down there every now and again.
Yeah, the guardrail looks good. It's all, it's cleaned up and it looks good. So we're gonna try to keep Mr. McDonough to maintain it. That's the trick next. We can't let the ponds grow, so... But I think I'm done. Everybody's very happy that it's in the park, that it's done. Some people feel much safer, if that makes any sense. But anyway, it's good. And I thank you, all the neighbors that work with us. It's been pretty good, you know? They're all good. You know, Sergeant Woods has been real good with us. We wrap each other around in there, so we've been good, so... But that's really about it. So I thank you, the board. I appreciate that. And I'll see you in the new year. We'll be back.
Very good. And I'll talk to Robin tomorrow about that letter.
I will email the particulars where to go with it. Okay?
Very good.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Have a great holiday, Tom. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay. So before we go on to our update for the ADU compliance, I'm just looking to do an acceptance of our last meeting's minutes. So that was October 28th, about a month ago.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the October 28th, 2025 meeting.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bob, and then Keith, Mr. Gibbons. And then finally, on here, we have the update for the ADUs.
Yep, so I have a couple of things, two zoning things. One will be the ADUs. The other one is just one other small zoning thing we need to do for compliance with state law. And it'll be pretty brief to go over. But before I start in on either of those timelines for doing zoning ordinances, I think you're gonna have a copy of the town meeting calendar. But for planning and zoning, we need to have the first public hearing noticed by New Year's Day. I strongly recommend we do not wait that long. And if, based on tonight, if you feel that the proposed changes, which I'm all, the only proposals that I've put in are compliance with state law, that we discuss whether it would be ready for public hearing at the next meeting on December 9th. There are probably both only one public hearing types of zoning ordinances, but it does allow for a second zoning ordinance without a special meeting for January 13th. And you're still in all of the dates without getting it down to the wire, which often select boards don't like for deliberative session. So... And also won't require us having a meeting on December 23rd, which I'm guessing no one would want to attend. So I can get in, I'll go over that again if we need be. But those are just some dates to keep in mind as we're talking about this and considerations.
Makes sense.
So the accessory dwelling unit regulation proposal that you have before you has a little bit of background. Some of that background could be used for deliberative session or voter guides. But basically, every New Hampshire municipality is having to update its accessory dwelling unit regulations to comply with state law that went into effect on July 1st. So you are already having to follow these regulations. Because of when it passed, it just couldn't keep up with when you can do zoning changes. And in my intent, and I went through the regulations, and I've done this for a lot of the towns in the RPC region. My intent was to do compliance with state law, but keep what could be kept. So not making significant changes to your accessory dwelling unit regulation unless it was required by the state law change.
Merging in the necessary changes.
Correct. So it looks like a lot, but it's really, those were the two things of what I was doing. Someone could go and apply for a building permit today, and you would have to basically follow exactly what I've presented because it is that mergeance. Big thing to know, this is important for the planning board, but also important, excuse me, can't talk today. Important for any voters, that should this not be put forth, should it fail at town meeting, you still have to follow the state law. The two big things that changed with the state law change is that it had always been that by right, a single-family home since 2017 was allowed an accessory dwelling unit. But up until this year, towns could only require that it be attached. Newton was among those who didn't allow detached accessory dwellings. The other aspect is towns could require someone to come in before the planning board or the zoning board for a conditional use permit or a special exception. Newton had done a conditional use permit. Now, you can get an accessory dwelling that is attached or detached with certain parameters. But by right, it only requires a building permit.
Can I ask you a question?
Yep.
Does it say in here that the person who wants an accessory dwelling unit needs to apply to the building department?
It does.
It does?
It does.
Okay, I guess I didn't see that. That's what I was looking for.
I was, in what I've presented, I do have a clean version at the end because I know it's a lot of track changes. So now, at this point, someone can apply for an accessory dwelling if they meet the criteria by just going and getting a building permit. Something that has always existed and continues to exist is you have to have adequate water and septic facilities as compliant with state law. So that has not gone away. There are things like your wetland setbacks that have not gone away. All of the things that apply to a single-family home and all of those setbacks still apply. One other thing that did change in the state regulations is that you can't regulate an accessory dwelling to be special. You can't regulate the appearance of that accessory dwelling beyond what you would regulate for a single-family home. The example I give, and it doesn't actually apply to Newton because you don't have it in a historic district, but in historic districts in some communities, houses have to maintain historical characteristics. And you can't just tack on a very modern-looking accessory dwelling. Well, if your regulations say you have to maintain that historic, historic look and feel, the accessory dwelling also has to be subject to those same. But if you don't have those kinds of regulations, which Newton does not, the look and feel can be, it can be a total mismatch.
So let me ask you another question. Okay, so then what went away was the fact that the entrance can't be on the front. It can't look like, that all went away?
That has all been stripped out of what is presented. Here you have.
Okie doke.
So, I mean, essentially, if the lot and the systems within the lot support an accessory dwelling unit, by all means.
You can still do it. It still has to meet structural setbacks. It still has to meet the basic lot sizing aspects. The other thing that did change is that if you have, let's say, a barn on your property that's a detached structure that's right up against the property lines, you can also put an accessory dwelling unit into that barn, regardless of the fact that that structure, as long as it existed by June 30th of this year, that that structure can be used as an accessory dwelling, even though it's right up against the property line.
That might actually apply to some properties in Newton.
Yeah, absolutely. And often, it's that detached barn or that detached garage that is sometimes the easiest way for someone to do an accessory dwelling that is detached without incurring, you know, building a new structure. So just to go down through the changes, one of the things we need to update is definitions. Right now, you have the term accessory apartment, which was fine. That's sort of why an accessory apartment is an accessory dwelling unit. So that's why we had just always had that. But because of the changes to the state law and the fact that we need to update the definition to match the state law, I am suggesting we turn that into now accessory dwelling units. And while there are sub definitions for attached and detached, the easiest way to think of it is that we no longer care if it is attached or detached. It is just an accessory dwelling.
Well, we might care, but the state law says we can't.
The state law does not care, so therefore, you are not allowed to care. So changing, I did add in and make a few modifications to what is sort of the purpose statement of the accessory dwelling unit regulation. I kept some of the same wording, but I tweaked it so that the authority of the purpose of the accessory dwelling unit is to increase housing alternatives while maintaining neighborhood aesthetics and quality. That is, the clause aesthetics and quality is from the existing language. "One accessory dwelling unit may be constructed with a building permit," so Barbara took it to your question before, "on any lot containing a single-family dwelling." So an accessory dwelling can also be built at the same time as a new home in any zone that allows single-family dwellings. So the one thing that can't happen is if there were to be a single-family home in your industrial district, which does not allow residential. If someone did have an existing single-family home, they could build an accessory dwelling. If there is a vacant lot in the industrial zone, they can't go and build a single-family home with an accessory dwelling at the same time. They can't do that new single-family home in accessory dwelling. If it's an existing single-family home, they're allowed to add the accessory dwelling.
Can I ask you a question? Do we even have an industrial zone? I know we have commercial.
Well, I'm sorry, the commercial industrial zone, which does, yeah. As opposed to just the commercial zone, which does allow residential.
Okay.
It's allowed on any lot, as long as the following provisions are met. So someone can go and get a building permit or seek a building permit if the following bullet points basically are met. It is subject to all of the zoning ordinances, including lot dimension, structural setbacks coverage, aesthetic requirements, and building area requirements imposed of a single-family dwelling. So you have limits in your groundwater regulations for the lot coverage. You have the setbacks that still apply for a single-family home. All still account for with the, either an addition of an accessory dwelling or a conversion of that home. A big one is that, and this is something the town does not have to put in its provisions, but you already had it, so I kept it, is that a single-family dwelling unit has to be owner-occupied. So the owner can reside in either one of the units, but that one of the units has to be owner-occupied. I did retain that. A lot of towns are wanting me to retain that, so I did in Newton's case as well. I did also add in that the dwelling unit shall remain in common ownership by the primary residence. That, I just sort of cleaned up that requirement with some stronger language. Keeping the provision that an accessory dwelling can only be two bedrooms, so that one can be retained. We did have to lose the not occupied by more than four people. Occupancy requirements were also part of a different state law that passed this year that towns are not allowed to restrict occupancy beyond building code. So the fact that you had that in there could conflict. So I just stripped it out.
Are there situations that we would run into where that number's drastically different? Like, is, basically, are we saying that, you know? Sorry, what was, what was the Newton one previously?
That no more than four people should occupy said apartment. So if you had, say, a two-bedroom accessory dwelling, and you had a couple with three children, and all three kids were sharing a bedroom, under Newton's regulations, you're saying you can't do that.
All right, got it. Okay.
I mean, that's sort of the simplest example, but... Another state law that did change is that towns now cannot require more than one parking space per residential dwelling unit. This is the only place in your ADU regulations where you specify how much parking space there has to have to comply with that state law. It's just at least one off-street parking for that accessory dwelling. People can have more than one. You just can't require they have more than one. And in my years of dealing with ADUs in Newton, I don't think anyone has had any issue with not having sufficient parking being the issue with their accessory dwelling. It does become more, more urbanized you get, the more that becomes an issue.
That does, not to sidetrack us, but that does bring up kind of an interesting issue with making the ADUs more available. What are essentially the ADA requirements for people?
The ADA requirements don't count for single-family dwellings and accessory dwellings.
Okay.
If you start getting into certainly like multifamily development, ADA does kick in. But in this instance, it wouldn't because of the type of the home.
Fair enough.
I did make some amendments that sort of, I'll say, beefs up that your septic system has to be adequate. I added language that just details out that you have to meet DES requirements for septic and wells. So that's why that looks a little, I'll say, beefier. But it says exactly the same thing. You have to have a state permit and adequate septic and water. And it does talk about what happens if the system fails, that you have to have an remediation plan on file as well. We do have to remove that the accessory apartment is attached to the dwelling unit.
So that septic system, Jen?
Yep.
So it's like if they have a single-family home and they have this smaller septic tank, they add that ADU, they might have to upgrade that tank.
They might have to upgrade their system.
Yeah.
At minimum, because if they're adding bedrooms, they're at least going to have a design on file that they can upgrade the system. They may not have to actually upgrade it until it fails. And some of the thinking on that is that when we talk about septic loading and it's calculated based on bedrooms or state law or per state administrative rule, the intensity of water use in a three-bedroom home that might have six people living in it versus the intensity of water use in a three-bedroom home if you only have one or two people can be very different. It is an average. So that's why they don't automatically make you replace the system. So... So again, because you can't regulate that the ADU is only attached, we've struck that existing clause. We've also struck the, that the accessory apartment shall have convenient and direct access to the primary dwelling and its own separate entrance or exit. I will note that I'll get to ingress and egress in just a second with some of the state laws, aspects that changed. The appearance shall remain that of a single-family residence. That's getting into that aesthetic. Someone could add on, in Newton currently, an addition onto their home that did not retain the look of a single-family residence. And you would have no jurisdiction to tell them they couldn't do that? Well, that's the same thing now with an accessory dwelling. And the fact that the entrances for the ADU shall be located on the side or the rear of the building, again, that's an aesthetic that you are imposing on to the ADU that you're no longer allowed to. We are keeping that the size of an accessory apartment shall be a maximum of 800 square feet. So the smallest you can go is 750. If you don't put a cap on it, you are allowed to go bigger, but if you don't put a cap on it, 950 is the biggest. So we are putting a cap of 800 square feet. Or I'm sorry, we're not putting it. We're retaining that 800 square feet. So the minimum is 750. You have to allow someone to do an ADU that's at least 750 square feet.
So basically, I mean, it has to be between 750 and 800?
No, someone could build a 400-square-foot ADU if they wanted to. You're just saying that the maximum square foot is just 800 square feet.
Oh, 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 okay. There's, so there's not like an imposed minimum?
No, the imposed minimum is through the state law, but you are, you're meeting that, so... The other thing is that the primary dwelling unit and accessory apartment shall share common utilities. That is still allowed to be retained, but there was the aspect of electrical service in the state law change that that utility has to be allowed to be separate.
Makes sense.
The design aspect, that it would be readily adaptable to conversion to the primary dwelling, again, that's the design aesthetic that has to be stripped out. And then this last one is that clause about accessory dwellings may be allowed in any structure legally existing as of June 30th, 2025, provided that adequate ingress and egress are provided as either independent or through common space.
Can I ask you a question?
Yep.
Does the building inspector have the right to go and inspect an existing structure to make sure that it's adequate, stable?
Yes.
I mean, and they should really do that if it's an existing building, correct?
Yep. And before someone can occupy an accessory dwelling put into an existing building, the building inspector would have to go through to make sure that that is stable and safe for occupancy.
Okay. Because it's like, all right, because I have a, I have a two-car garage that's separate from the house with a loft.
Yep.
Now, if you look at it, you could say, well, you could put a little apartment up at the top. But my garage has a monolithic slab for a brace, and you're not allowed to have living space there according to what they had told us when we put it in. And we never expected any apartment to go up. So the building inspector would look at the building and see that? So he would know?
And if a building has to be brought up to code to enable it to be a dwelling that can be occupied, the building inspector has the authority to do that and require that.
Okay. Yeah, once you pull, once you pull a new permit to do any type of work, that automatically triggers what Jen's talking about. The new codes have to be met.
Good.
It would be similar like if you were renovating your kitchen and the old electric was knob-and-tube electric, and you're upgrading it. So now you have to put in grounded outlets. It would be a similar sort of aspect of the building code.
All right. I just have one more question, and then I'll stop interrupting you. I'm sorry. Okay.
Perfectly fine.
We have at least, that I know of, one area where it's like two-family houses are allowed. Now, this says, "may be constructed on any lot containing a single-family dwelling in any zone, district that allows it."
Yeah.
So right now, if somebody had, they wanted to do an apartment on one of those...
On a duplex? They could not. Nope.
And, and there's no, what do I want to say? There's no avenue for them to say, could we go to the planning board or the zoning board to get a special exception or anything? Did, nobody's ever talked about anything about that?
So the only way that that would be able to occur, well, I'm sorry, there's a couple of ways. Someone could seek a variance to allow, and that would be really from that purpose statement that it's only allowed in a single-family home. Someone could go and seek a variance to do that with a duplex. And that would be fine under state law for someone to do that. Or someone that has a duplex that then wants to add a third dwelling can also apply for a site plan because once you get to three units, it's a multifamily development, and then they can do a site plan.
Instead of getting to a complex at that point?
I mean, really, at that point, it's worth doing the site plan because you can sell them independently. You can't sell an accessory dwelling unit because it's accessory. You can't sell them separately. They cannot be condominiumized.
Okay. All right.
That would open...
Just from a financial standpoint, doing the three units.
And that would open up a huge can of worms if there was ever any issues between the two owners.
Oh, yeah.
Correct. I mean, so one situation that could arise, and this has been asked, and I, I'll give you the best answer I've heard, is that if a homeowner has an accessory dwelling, which they can rent, it doesn't have to be just a family, and they are renting that to someone, and they have a lease, well, then they go and sell the home to someone else. Well, if that person's going to reside in the main house and still rents, then that's, that's fine. But if the person who buys the house is not going to reside in the main unit or accessory dwelling, what happens to that lease? And the lease, the lease has to play out.
Because the owner doesn't reside on site.
Right. So there, there is that possibility. I mean, ultimately, it seems that the rental lease will preside through the term of that lease. But someone could, in theory, be out of compliance with the zoning in that situation.
But I guess who's out of compliance? The person doing the renting or the owner?
The owner.
So, yeah.
I, I strongly think that we will see more legislation put in and conquered I, I strongly think that we will see more legislation put in and conquered dealing with accessory dwellings. I don't know what it will say. It'll probably have a couple of bills on either side of the spectrum, to be honest, because a lot of towns are unhappy with this. Um, and a lot of people are saying, I'm unhappy with it, but I understand that something has to happen with housing. So we might have to make tweaks this time next year as well, but this is the state law at this point. It's gone into effect. It makes it easier for Sam to be able to administer it and homeowners to read it at this point, so.
It's a big change.
It, it's pretty significant. Yours is not at the most significant one I've made adjustments to, um, for just doing that, like bringing it up to compliance, but.
Hmm.
If you're amendable, this I think is ready to go to public hearing. You'd have to vote to move it to public hearing. It would have to be noticed. Um, we do have a little time. We could kick it to one more meeting.
Is there any reason to, why would we kick it to one more meeting? Cause we have to make these changes anyways, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's why I'm presenting it and telling you it's, it's pretty, I think it's good to go, but.
Let's ship it.
Yeah, I think it's good the way it is.
I'll make a motion that we have public hearing for this on the next meeting.
I'll second that.
And I'll, I can work with Robin about what that noticing should look like in the, in the paper. Um, this is the one noticing that still does have to go in the paper, unlike an application. So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, you ready for the next one?
Oh, yeah.
All right, this one is much easier. So one of the other state laws that changed is that they made it so that if you have a commercially zoned district, which Newton does have a commercially zoned district, that allows things like retail and office space, you have to allow by right multifamily development. So that goes into effect on July 1 of next year. This is also a bill that probably will get debated and conquered, but this is the law as of now. So the only thing that actually needs to happen to Newton's regulations to be in compliance is in the commercial zone, you currently have a couple of listings of what is a permitted use, and it says any use permitted in residential zones A or B, which only is single-family and duplex. If we add multiple unit dwellings to that list, you are in compliance with that state law. That is the only thing that needs to change.
So literally number two, multiple unit dwellings.
It's adding number two, and we'd renumber the ones that are below.
Seems straightforward.
I'm, I'm looking at the 125 development property.
So I did not change the commercial industrial zone, which is largely, um, what 125 Development owns. That does not actually allow residential, for that residential development that got, um, they got a variance.
This is more like down the street right here, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, no, was the, the one you're talking about, that, that, excuse me, where you're talking about where they got okay to build those units?
The 44 here.
Right. That little, that little, that was already zoned, they're residential.
That is zoned residential. You're, you're correct, Barbara.
Right.
So this change would not enable 125 and their property on those lots in the commercial industrial zone, which is its own zoning district.
Right.
To do residential because it, it largely can conflict. Um, it would only be the commercial district that we're talking about that would allow multifamily.
Okay.
Um, and the other clause to this in the state law is that, um, you have to allow it, provided there's adequate infrastructure with, so water, sewer, transportation. For Newton, the real restriction is for that kind of development is going to be water and septic. Well, they have to come in and show they have adequate septic for getting a state permit and also for your site plan regulation, so it really doesn't add a lot. Um, you'd do a traffic study if it was a big enough impact, it would impact on DOT, all of your commercial districts, but state rates.
Right, I mean, in general, we didn't really have the support for it to begin with. I mean, this doesn't change the level of support Newton has for the ability of people to do that.
Well, I think it makes sense to say, okay, for a commercial, but not a commercial industrial, because commercial is mostly, I shouldn't say that. The commercial industrial, you could have things that you don't want around where people are living.
Correct.
But just commercial, it could be just selling things or office space or whatever.
Yep. Um, I will say in your village district area, you already allow mixed use of multifamily mixed with commercial, retail, office, so.
Right.
This wouldn't be a drastic change for Newton.
I was gonna say, I think there is already places in Newton where that's taking place.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, that sounds good. Do we need to take this to?
Also would need to go to public hearing, same thing.
Need a motion?
I make a motion. Oh, are you gonna do it?
No, I, I don't think I'm allowed to.
I make a motion to take the, uh, commercial zone changes to public hearing at our next meeting.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we will plan on that on December 9th as your next meeting. Um, we've already talked about the dates, unless folks have questions on that.
Yeah, hopefully this will make sure that we're not running up to any deadlines.
Talk about this, no?
Um, other zoning things, I have had one resident reach out to me that, um, was interested in doing a citizen's petition. Citizen's petitions for zoning can come in all the way up until December 10th. Um, if that were to happen, which I think there's a chance it will happen, um, what happens with the citizen's petition is if they file it and then it's got the adequate 25 registered voters for Newton that has to be verified with the town clerk, um, the planning board has to have a public hearing on it. You basically have to let the person say what they've proposed. You are not allowed to change the wording in any way, shape, or form, even if it might be clarifying and the person agrees, you can't change it at all, and you have to move it to the ballot.
It's like a warrant.
Yep. It gets noted as a citizen's petition with any zoning change, you get to identify whether the planning board is in favor of the proposal or not. Um, about 10 years ago, Newton did have a citizen's petition where the planning board disagreed unanimously with that recommendation. I don't remember if it passed or not, um, but you do have that, that's the one thing you can do with a citizen's petition.
Okay.
So just, unfortunately, that is the day after your meeting, so we would have to take that up, um, at the first January meeting.
No, that's what I was gonna say, so we, so if a petition comes in.
If it, I'm sorry, if a petition comes in, there is a chance you might have to meet on the 23rd. But the only thing you would do?
Like December 23rd?
Like December 23rd. Or, or you could schedule a meeting before that. We could come up with an alternate date tonight if you wanted to.
Let's do that.
Okay. Um, you'd have to move it to public hearing, which could be your.
I think it's gonna be very difficult to get people in here on December 23rd.
Yep.
So, but, let's do that.
My son included quite frankly.
Well, we have to remember too, cause he's, in doing so, it's gotta meet the requirements to be able to post for the public hearing and all that too.
Um, what if the tentative date was December 16th? It's a Tuesday.
That's the Tuesday before.
Yeah. You would know by the 10th.
Better than the 23rd.
Yeah.
Can't meet the 16th because the planning, um, select board meets.
What about the 18th? It's a Thursday.
Um.
I think this would be a 30-minute tops meeting, probably more like 10 minutes.
I think Thursday night, the hall is available. I could, that's the other thing, like I said, the, the select board meets. Robin says it is available on the 18th.
That was fast.
She's watching. So I mean, is a, is a tentative the 18th date if necessary?
I, I mean, I, I don't know about everyone else. I personally would prefer that over the 23rd.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. The 18th is fine with me, so.
Yep.
That's a Thursday, right?
Yes.
Yep.
So when?
So December 10th, they have to put in a citizen's petition by, so you would know by December 11th.
Okay, all right.
Robin said she just booked it, so we have the hall already reserved for that night.
Okay.
Well, if we don't need it, we could do a block party.
There you go.
And then you wanted to bring up about the encumbering the funds.
Yeah, so, um, the way your circuit rider contract works, it goes from July 1 to June 30th. It follows, um, the state fiscal year, which is my office's fiscal year. Newton's fiscal year is the calendar year, so it's always off that six month. Um, but in looking at the expenses that my office has billed you for this calendar year, your, your line item for circuit riding, I think it might be called like professional services, but for circuit riding, um, we've billed you, it's about $5,000 less than what I think you guys had planned for. In part, just you haven't been as busy. We've canceled a couple of meetings. Um, so there's a couple of things, because you already have allocated those funds, and this has happened in Newton in the past where either my office bills you that remaining amount so that you're basically encumbering some of the funds this year, so you're not having to spend them next year.
Yep.
Or we could come up with a small contract that's sort of technical assistance so that you can at least expend those dollars and get the benefit of what's already been allocated. Um.
Essentially like an hourly.
Yeah, yeah, it's based on hourly. Um, so a, a thing that I think would be useful for Newton, and Barbara, I'm gonna say this, and I know you and Jim worked really hard on a lot of our, the applications, but I think some of the application forms could be beefed up, and I think there's a couple that are missing from like some of the conditional use permits we did with the groundwater, and I think there's some instructions that might be useful, um, to add to all applications. It's a small task, it's something my staff can help with. I think that it might actually be really nice timing with you coming on board, um, because it'll help you to learn the process, just because when, if you have to make a form for something, you gotta know the process, the forms for. Um, so I just want, you don't have to make a decision, and I can get more solid numbers, but it was just the thought of using the technical assistance funds Newton's already allocated.
Sure.
Cause I don't think we'll need them for the circuit riding. Um, you know, we'll have another meeting or two between the end of the year now, but.
I mean, if, unless we have, for whatever reason, some sort of preference to bill, you know, essentially apply it to next year, I would, I, it sounds like that is a good usage.
Well, and there's probably a couple of forms we can get rid of too, if we don't need to do conditional use permit. Or is conditional use permit only for the apartment?
Only for the accessory dwellings, but.
Okay, so we could probably just get rid of that one.
Some, some re, alignment that needs to happen. I don't think it's a huge, uh, total overhaul, but.
Thing to look through all of the, the form stuff update.
Informational form is gonna be huge, especially with bill just starting, to be able to point people in a bright direction on what they need to do to be able to complete and get everything set.
Yeah, I mean, very specifically, a checklist. Most communities have a checklist, um, for Newton, I think is my only town that has not historically ever had one. I think it could be useful. I think it would be useful for board members as well.
I think so too.
Well, not only that, but then it also helps so that the applicant isn't turning around saying, well, you didn't tell me this, or you didn't give me this. We can say, well, you had all the information right there at your, at your disposal, and you knew what you needed to get. So I think if you wanna come up with those figures.
So I can draft up a scope of work and a cost based on what I know, um, for you guys to present, and I'll, I'll send it to you ahead of time, especially you bucks dealing with the budgetary aspects. Um, it was just, it's something that popped up, so figured it was worth discussion.
If it makes things clear.
Way to fly and take care of some of that, and that would be very helpful.
If anything, it'll help with efficiencies and everything.
Exactly.
Right.
So I got one last thing for you, that's kind of along this efficiency.
Promise?
Promise. I have drafted, and I didn't bring it because I wasn't quite done, the updated meeting dates and submittal dates for posting on the website. We're at the end of the year, so people wanting to submit applications for January, we're starting to hit the end of the existing calendar. Um, I'm gonna change the format a little bit so it's a little easier to follow, uh, but keep it the same, second and fourth Tuesday. You have to submit it about 25 days ahead of time.
Okay.
And avoid holidays and such.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay. So we'll, we'll see that at the next meeting.
The meeting schedules?
Yeah.
Yeah, just remember about, uh, no, no meeting on town election day.
Yes, yep. That, that's amongst the holidays we have.
Right.
All right?
Okay.
That's all I have.
Sounds good. In that case, we will adjourn at 7:46?
And that sounds like a plan.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.